In today's study session, I'm gonna help you fall in love with reading. But of course, because this is a Kami's English Corner Study Session, we will be covering all areas of English in a relatively short amount of time so that you can efficiently and optimally improve your English ability. Welcome to episode three of English Study Sessions. In this series, we will study all areas of English in a way that fits your busy schedule. Remember, this isn't really a lesson. It's more of a guided study routine to help you easily integrate English studying into your everyday life. But of course, I will do a little bit of teaching and help give you tips and tricks along the way to improve your English even more. In today's session, we'll be covering listening, reading, speaking, grammar, vocabulary, and writing, all in a relatively short amount of time. To do this, in some sections, we will only practice one subject at a time. But in other sections, we will integrate multiple subjects together so that you can practice in a more comprehensive and natural way that will also save you a lot of time. Not only will this approach be more time efficient to fit your busy schedule, it's also a much easier way to learn a new language because it's very similar to how you learned your native language as a child. So here's a breakdown of today's study session. First, we'll dive into a dedicated reading section with an emphasis on finding joy. Then we'll focus on listening with a little story time about my journey to fall in love with reading. And at the end of the story, we'll have a listening comprehension quiz to test out your listening skills. And to wrap everything up, we'll be combining vocabulary, grammar, and writing into a final writing assignment. And just like our other study sessions, we'll be sprinkling in speaking opportunities throughout the video. To be successful in today's study session, you will need a few things. The most important thing that you'll need today is a reading material that brings you joy and makes you feel happy. The purpose of today's reading section is not to learn and gain a new information. It's to find joy and find happiness in books. I want you to fall in love with reading by the end of today's video. So unless you love self-help books and newspaper articles, please choose something that makes you feel happy. Today, I'm actually going to be rereading a book from one of my favorite romantic fantasy series. Remember, you'll still be able to learn from fun reading materials because you'll be exposed to new vocabulary and it gives you a great opportunity to see different kinds of grammar and sentence structures. Even though most of the books I read are about magic and dragons and fairies, I still learn new vocabulary every time I read. You don't need academic literature to learn new things that will help you along your English learning journey. In addition to your fun reading materials, you will also need five vocabulary words. You can either use words that you pick out in today's reading section, which we'll do first, or you can use words that you're already studying, either from class or from your Five by Five Vocabulary Study Guide. I will be using the words from my Five by Five Vocabulary Study Guide that I picked out in episode one of our English Study Sessions. You'll also need something to write in for the final writing assignment. So you can either use your phone, tablet, computer, a piece of paper, or like I'll be doing, you can use that day three and four page in your Five by Five Vocabulary Study Guide. And the final required thing that you will need today is a cozy place to study. This will be a key component to helping you find joy in reading. But don't worry, we'll discuss all the key aspects to creating that cozy environment in just a moment. Some optional materials that will help enhance today's study session will be the Reading Recommendations Guide, which has more than forty fun book recommendations, and a whole bunch of resources to get those books for free. I also recommend the Weekly Study Plan to help track your progress. And finally, snacks. Today's study session will maybe be a little bit longer, and some yummy food will definitely help with the theme of finding joy. So first things first, we need to discuss how to create the perfect space for reading that will make you want to read. Sitting at a desk or table can become quite uncomfortable and it makes it feel more like, well, studying. So many of us grew to resent reading when we were students because we were forced to read at school. So we really need to get out of that study mindset so that we can start to create some positive associations with reading. So step one for creating the perfect reading space is comfy clothes and your cozy reading space. So let's discuss the key things that are essential to creating that perfect cozy reading space that will help you enjoy reading again. To start out, comfort is key. Along with your cozy clothes and bonus points if they're related to the book that you're reading, you really need to find a physically comfortable place where you can sit or lay down to do your reading. So for myself, I usually read at nighttime before I go to sleep, so I read in bed. Or maybe you can read on your sofa, or if you have a chair like this, you can sit in a big comfy chair. And if you don't have an ideal comfortable place to sit or lay down, you might be able to find something online for really, really cheap. I was able to buy this chair for fifteen dollars on Facebook Marketplace from a university student. Now, it did smell pretty bad when I bought it, but after a thorough cleaning, it was fine. Next, depending on if you're reading from a physical book or on your computer laptop Kindle, you really need to take into consideration what kind of light you want. So maybe you can sit by a window or sit by a lamp. Or maybe none of that actually matters if you're reading from a computer laptop phone or Kindle that has a backlight because it's providing its own light source. However, I know for some people, that can actually give them a headache if they're reading in a dark room with just the light from their screen. So try to figure out the most comfortable way for you to read because if every time you read, you're getting headaches, obviously, reading will not bring you joy and you won't want to read anymore. And along with that, try to figure out the most ideal way for you to read, whether that is on your phone, your tablet, a physical book, or a Kindle. So in my free reading recommendation guide, I provided tons of links for free book resources that you can download. If you don't want to purchase a Kindle, you don't have to. You can still access the Kindle application for free on any of your devices. And then you can check out those links that I provided in the reading recommendation guide so that you can download as many books as you want for free. And if you are considering getting a Kindle, I know for me, this was one of my best investments that I've ever made. Think about getting one that is refurbished. So I got mine refurbished back in twenty twenty and because it wasn't brand new, I got an almost fifty percent discount on it. So Kindles are an investment, but they last forever. My mom has had her Kindle for, god, ten years at least, and it still works great. And the refurbished ones really are just as good as the new ones. But of course, the ultimate free book option is going to your local library. So even if you don't want to read books in English, I get it, that's fine. Any kind of reading is just gonna be beneficial for your brain and it's a really nice way to relax during a busy day or week. Trust me, once you find your joy in reading, you will never want to put a book down again. And the last thing that I consider to be truly essential to creating that perfect cozy reading space is finding another thing that helps you relax and makes you happy. So maybe for you, that's some quiet music. For myself, I really love crackle candles. Or really just any kind of candle, but I find that these candles that have a little bit of a crackly sound really helps to put me in the perfect mood to read. And I also like burning my favorite scents when I'm reading. So that way, when I read, I also have that positive scent association. So this candle is called Morning Brew and it's a fresh coffee scent. And it just makes me think of coffee shops and kind of reminiscent of bookstores because a lot of bookstores here in the United States have like a Starbucks or some kind of coffee shop in them. So when I smell it, it just really puts me in the mood to get cozy. And maybe you can hear? It makes a really lovely crackling sound, almost like a miniature fireplace. And of course, you can't forget some yummy snacks or maybe get your favorite warm drink that will make you feel extra happy and full of joy. Usually, if I'm going to sit down and read or study for a long time, I like to have a big bowl of popcorn. But because I'm on camera, I don't really want to eat because I might get some food stuck in my teeth. So I am going to indulge in a chai latte today. Whether it's winter or summer, I can always find joy in my favorite hot cinnamon-y drink. So now let's get into the reading section. So remember, for your reading material today, I don't care what it is. The only thing that matters is that it brings you joy. The point of our reading today is not to learn, it's to find happiness. So I'm going to actually be rereading a book from one of my favorite series, A Court of Thorns and Roses. So this book is full of magic and fairies and this is what brings me joy and happiness. Obviously, I'm wearing a t-shirt related to the book. You can see I have a Harry Potter background. I love magic, fantasy, and romance books. That's what brings me joy. So I will be indulging in my romanticy fiction today. And again, I want you to find something that brings you that same kind of happiness. If you're having difficulty finding a book like that, again, check out my free reading recommendations guide because it is full of all different kinds of books that are really fun and enjoyable. Now, in our first study session episode, I was reading Dr. Hyde and Mr. Jekyll and I kept that reading material on screen. Today, because I'm reading on my Kindle, I'm not really able to share the screen. And also in this book, there's a lot of violence. So just to keep things appropriate for all ages, I'm just going to be showing the cover of the book on the side of the screen. We're not gonna share the contents today. And don't forget, while you're reading, if you come across any new words, write them down, but do not take time to look up the definitions until after our reading section. If you stop and look up definitions, that's going to ruin the flow of your reading and there's a good chance that you'll get distracted by something on your phone. So just write them down and continue your reading. So in episode one, we only did ten minutes, but today we are going to do fifteen. That way, you can dive deeper into your story. And also, I'm being a little selfish because I'm really enjoying the book that I'm reading right now. So we'll both mutually benefit from this because it's more time for you to fall in love with reading and it's more time for me to read what I already love. Okay, fifteen minutes, let's begin.
Okay, that's it for our reading section. How was your book? So tell me, what book did you read? And don't forget to use past tense because it's now in the past, it was a few moments ago. Can you explain to me why or how it brings you joy? So why did you choose that book? I really hope today's reading section was beneficial for you and maybe helped you find at least a little kernel of happiness when it comes to reading. Now let's move on to a bit of listening practice. So today I'm going to give you a little story time about my reading journey. And I'm also going to add in some specific facts and details, a few numbers as well. So make sure that you're listening really carefully because at the end of the listening section, we're going to have a quiz on some of those facts that I stated along with some idioms and some key vocabulary that was used. So for this story time, I did write down a few notes on my phone just so that I could remember all the things that I wanted to include. Are you ready? Let's get listening. A lot of people grow to resent reading because they are forced to do it as a child. And when you are made to do something, it can really just suck all the happiness out of it. Most likely you were forced to read different kinds of historical literature and textbooks when you were in elementary through high school and in university. And you probably didn't even have time to read any kind of fun book. So it's quite common for people to not want to read for fun at all after this horrible time period. On top of that, social media has led us to believe that we must optimize our free time in order to learn or try and improve ourselves at every possible moment. So even though we grew up hating these educational books that we were forced to read in school, now social media is also pushing us to read even more educational materials. But this kind of education is, you know, a little bit different. Maybe it's about finance or helping with mental health. But their purpose is to still teach you something. And another really big problem with these books is that they can cause you to have a lower self-esteem. You might feel guilty if you can't follow the miracle morning to a T. Or I know for myself, I wasn't able to stay consistent with the tidying up methods from the joy of tidying up. And when you can't follow the rules in the books exactly, it might make you feel like a bit of a failure when you're not a failure. You're just a human. Also, you need to keep in mind that most of the authors in these books don't have any formal education in what they're writing about. So a lot of people that write about mental health are not licensed professionals. They're not actually psychologists or psychiatrists. Or people that write about financial advice, they might just be a businessman who got lucky in a certain situation. They might not even have a degree in business or finance. So you might want to think twice about getting advice from these experts because they're probably just trying to make a quick buck on people that are desperate to get help. I actually found some pretty interesting facts about the self-help industry. In 2023 alone, the self-help industry made over forty billion dollars. That's billion with a B, not million, billion. So there's a good chance that the people writing these books are not truly trying to help. They're just trying to cash in on this current trend. So how is this related to my reading journey? Well, let's start from the beginning. When I was a little kid, I loved reading. And this was for a few reasons. One, I was always encouraged to read what I found to be interesting, which even back then was a lot of fantasy books, but also a lot of books about horses and stuff. So I always read books that made me happy. Also, my parents really restricted and limited my screen time. So I had a lot of extra time during the day that I was not allowed to be on the computer or TV. So what did I do? I read. Also, every week, my mom took my brother and I to the library so that we could pick out any books that we wanted. And I just remember the joy that both of us felt when it was library day and we could go there and hang out for hours, reading the books there and then checking them out to take them home to read during the week. It was really awesome. And parents, this is something that you can try doing with your children as well because I also have a lot of students that are parents and they're concerned that their children don't enjoy reading. So maybe you can try limiting their screen time so that reading is kind of the only thing that they can do. It might be difficult at first, but eventually your kids will get used to it. Kids are flexible, they can adapt. So even though I loved reading so much as a kid, when I got to high school, we had to start reading literary fiction and historical fiction. And I hated it. I hated those books so much and I felt like I wasn't as smart as the other kids in my class because when we had to do all of the literary analysis and figure out the metaphors and symbolism, I really struggled. And with that kind of analytical reading, it started to kill my joy with reading. I didn't want to do it as much and the books that we were reading were so boring. Ugh, I hated them. So my joy started going down in high school. And then in university, I had to read so many textbooks that my brain was just fried by the end of the day. And I was too tired to read any books. All I wanted to do was watch some Netflix or chill out on Facebook because Facebook was cool back when I was in university. So in university, I did dabble in reading for fun a little bit with the Hunger Games series. I did quite enjoy those, but then it was finals week again and I couldn't find time to read. And after graduating university, I moved to South Korea right away and there were just very few options for English books when I was there. There was one English bookstore that I knew of, but it was about two hours away from my apartment. And I didn't know about all the different online reading resources at that time. So for those five years that I lived in Korea, I never picked up a book. And I, I always felt a little sad about that, like there is a little, a little hole in my heart because I wanted to read, I had more time to read, but I just felt like I couldn't get any books. I couldn't figure out how I could read. Then in 2018, my husband and I moved back to the United States, but I was struggling with a lot of health problems and I wasn't able to see very well. I had really bad brain fog, so again, I wasn't reading. It wasn't until 2020 that I got back into reading. So that was about a ten-year gap from when I had last read a book for fun. But what led me to start reading again in 2020? Well, obviously COVID was going on. And in the United States, we had a very controversial presidential election. And every time I went on social media, it was so stressful. And I was starting to just become really anxious all the time. I had problems sleeping because every time I went on social media and went online, there was always something negative. So I decided to cut out all social media for at least a few weeks, just to see how everything would go. And I realized when I cut it all out, I had a lot of extra time in my schedule. And so I decided to invest in my refurbished Kindle and I found some free reading resources. And in those first few months that I had my Kindle, I read almost twenty books. Now, I'm a fast reader and they were very short, quick and easy books. But at that time, that's when I was able to truly find happiness and joy in reading again. And I haven't looked back since. Now, I am back to using social media again, I haven't completely cut it out. But I do love reading at nighttime before I go to bed because it really helps me relax. And I often read during lunchtime as well. So really any free moment that I have that's longer than five minutes, I'm probably gonna bust out the old Kindle and get back to reading my book because this brings me a lot more peaceful joy and happiness than this on Instagram, social media, the news, whatever. So the moral of this story is it's never too late to try and get started with reading or to get back into reading. You just have to find books that really make you happy and carve out some time in your schedule, maybe by reading instead of scrolling on social media. So I hope you paid attention because now it's time for the listening quiz.
Question one, why do many people not enjoy reading? A, it's not fun. B, it's boring. C, they were forced to do it in school. Or D, it gives them a headache. The answer is C, they were forced to do it in school. Question two, what has social media made us believe? A, we need to relax more. B, we need to study more. C, we need to cook more. Or D, we need to optimize our free time. The answer is D, we need to optimize our free time. Question three, what does it mean to follow something to the T? A, carefully follow the directions. B, generally follow the directions. C, ignore the directions. Or D, make a T chart. The answer is A, carefully follow the directions. Question four, true or false? Most self-help authors are highly educated experts in their fields. The answer is B, it's false. Question five, what does it mean to make a quick buck? Is it A, spend a long time investing in stocks? B, earn money in a short amount of time? C, get a job? Or D, monetize your hobby? Or D, monetize your hobby? The answer is B, earn money in a short amount of time. Question six, what does it mean to think twice about something? Is it A, think about something two times? B, make a spontaneous decision? C, carefully consider the topic? Or D, ask people for advice? The question is C, carefully consider the topic. Question seven, how much money did the self-help industry make in 2023? I'm not going to say these numbers out loud, I want you to try and figure it out. The answer is D, forty billion dollars. Remember, billion has nine zeros, whereas million has six zeros. Question eight, what social media was popular when I was in university? Is it A, Facebook? B, Instagram? C, Twitter? Or D, YouTube? The answer is A, Facebook, back when it used to be cool. Question nine, what does dabble mean? Is it A, to devote all of your time to something? B, to casually try something? C, to eat a new food? Or D, to play outside? The answer is B, to casually try something. And final question, what is a good way to fit reading into your schedule? Is it A, completely stop social media? B, ignore your friends and family? C, purchase a Kindle? Or D, reduce social media usage? The answer is D, reduce social media usage. You don't have to stop it completely. You of course should not ignore your friends and family. And there are so many other options for reading besides using a Kindle. Though I do prefer reading on my Kindle, but you read in any way.
So what about you? Tell me about your reading journey. And don't forget to use past tense to discuss what happened in the past.
And don't forget to use past tense to discuss what happened in the past and use present tense to discuss your current feelings about reading. So what are your plans to continue your reading journey in the future? Make sure to use the future tense words like will and going to, or you can also use some hypothetical vocabulary like would, could and should. That sounds like a great idea. It's always good to have a plan in place before you start any kind of learning journey. But if you do need a bit more help with how to fit reading into your everyday routine, definitely check out my free weekly study plan because it has resources and different tips and tricks to incorporate more reading into your everyday life. Now it's time for the final section of today's studying session. You've been doing a great job so far. I'm very proud of you. So for today's final assignment, we are going to be combining vocabulary, grammar and writing. Not only will this method help you save a whole bunch of time, it's also a great way to actually apply your knowledge and use it in a more natural way like you would with your own native language. I'm sure as a child, when you learned your native language, you didn't study vocabulary, writing and grammar all separately. You practiced everything all together so that you can absorb all of that knowledge at once. So that's why we'll be doing something similar in today's practice. So what we're going to do today is use those five vocabulary words that I mentioned at the beginning of this video. And we will be writing three sentences with each vocab word. Now, I'm going to be using the five vocabulary words that I picked out from Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde back in our first study session episode. But of course, you can use whatever vocabulary you want. Maybe you picked out five words from today's reading section. Or maybe you have a fresh new batch of words in your five by five vocabulary study guide for this week. It doesn't really matter. I just want you to use whatever five words you would like. So if you are using your five by five vocabulary study guide, I want you to go ahead and scroll down to the day three and four section. The purpose of day three and four is to use each vocabulary word in three different tenses. Past tense, present tense, or future tense, you can choose, and perfect tense. So if you are not using the five by five vocabulary study guide, that's fine. But I still want you to follow the same writing prompt. Choose whatever five vocabulary words you want. And I want you to make a sentence in each of those tenses for each word. And in the reading section, I had mentioned to try avoid using your phone because that would disrupt the flow of your reading. But for this writing section, it may be useful for you to look up how the words are used in context, just so that you can write a sentence with more accuracy. That doesn't mean that you should copy the sentences from the internet, but you can reference them to get an idea of how to use the word in context. So similar to the reading section where we made it 15 minutes instead of 10, we're gonna do the same thing for today's vocabulary, writing, grammar section because there is going to be a little bit more work required. But of course, you can pause before the end of the session to give yourself more time. So when you're ready, let's begin. Okay, that's it. How'd it go? I know I definitely struggled with a few of the words like emulously and catholicity. Both of those have, I'm honestly not sure if I used them correctly. Even though I looked up so many different examples, just. up so many different examples, just I never plan on using those again in my daily vocabulary. But I do feel pretty confident about my usage of sordid and mortified, so it's okay. So what about you? What five vocab words did you use in your sentences today? For some extra speaking practice, go ahead and read your sentences out loud too. Great job. That was not an easy writing task today because we were practicing multiple tenses with all new vocabulary. And for a little bonus writing task, go ahead and write in the comments what book you read today and why it brings you joy. So thank you so much for joining me today in our English study session where we were able to cover all areas of English in a relatively short period of time. I'm really proud of you for all the hard work and time that you're dedicating towards your English learning journey. So I hope today, along with practicing all of your English, that you are also able to find your joy with reading and that you can take this reading practice with you to continue reading for, well, the rest of your life. Now, I'm sure you're a bit tired after today's study session, so I totally understand if you wanna log off YouTube and go curl up to read that book of yours. But if you are interested in watching some more English education videos, definitely check out this one right here. See you later.